All right, we'll now call the city council regular meeting to order for March 27th, 6:00 PM. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance, invocation given by Councilwoman Brittany McGuire.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for all the individuals that that came out tonight, Lord, to hear the city business. Lord, I'm asking you to give us wisdom, help us to be fair, to use the best decision making skills that we have, Lord. Help us do the absolute best for our town and all those that live here. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McCure?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. First, we have item number four. This will be a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas Florida is committed to improving the lives of all Floridians and securing a better future for the citizens of this state. And whereas children who have adverse childhood experiences, Aces, are at a high risk of short and long term physical, psychological, and behavioral challenges that can impact the individual child and the greater community. And whereas parents and caregivers who have resources and support are better equipped to give their children safe and nurturing experiences. Whereas children have better mental health and physical health and academic success when they are raised in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas the Florida Department of Children and Families Secretary has a vision for holistic services by integrating systems and services. And whereas the state of Florida has established Home Hope Florida, a pathway to prosperity, a personalized approach to help families overcome barriers to self sufficiency through community collaboration. And whereas Floridians can call 850-300-HOPE to speak with Care Navigator for support to develop a plan to achieve economic self sufficiency, referrals to local partners, and help identifying goals and barriers in their lives. And whereas during the month of April, Prevent Child Abuse Florida, in collaboration with the Governor's Office of Adoption and Child Protection, the Florida Department of Children and Families, the Once the Ounce of Prevention Fund of Florida implements pinwheels for prevention. A statewide coordinated campaign to raise awareness of child abuse prevention efforts by teaching about healthy child development and positive parenting practices, and establishing circle of parents peer support groups. And whereas Child Abuse Prevention Month provides everyone a chance to learn how they can play a role in preventing abuse and neglect, including adverse childhood experiences, Aces. And whereas Child Abuse Prevention Month reminds Floridians of all ages that they can help children increase positive childhood experiences, which lead to happier, healthier childhoods. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Garrett Anderson, Mayor of Avon Park, Florida, do hereby extend my support to all observing April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Florida. Anything else to add to that, staff? None? All right. Item number five, we have an event request and waiver of fees for Easter outreach at Donaldson Park Without Borders. Deli, I seen you out there. There you are. If you want to come up and give us an overview of what it is? Maybe? If you will, just give your name and your organization for the record.
My name is Deli Alisea, Without Borders Calvario. We do it every year, so it's an event for the community, for the kids.
Okay.
They will have craft games and egg hunt.
All right, yeah, we've seen this event several times now. Seems to go off very well. I know their staff are always very well organized. Seems like everything runs like clockwork. We're very appreciative of that. Very appreciative of what you do for the community. Is there any questions about this application? They're requesting the pavilions at Donaldson Park are also requesting a waiver of fees for those pavilions.
You're gonna be using every pavilion, correct?
I'm sorry?
Every pavilion, Donaldson Park?
Yeah, we use both. Every time we use it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions?
Has the insurance been turned in? The proof of insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve B5 to waive the fees and let them use the Donaldson Park.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Deli, thanks again. Look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Item number six, this will be the Union Church Spring Festival Event with road closure. Do we have Tracy with us? Okay. If you will, please give your name and organization for the record and microphone there.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tracy Caraballo. I'm the Treasurer for Union Church.
Okay. All right. We have an event request here. My computer is taking a while to load.
I think both of these events are on the same day, April 8th, from
Yes, yes.
11 to 1.
Correct.
So our, our kids in Avon Park are gonna have a great time because
They're gonna be busy.
We're gonna have two locations. They're really just go for it. So I think it's wonderful that we have both, both events happening at the same time. And the kids can be to pick one or go to both. And I really appreciate everybody doing this. And you're really just asking for a road closure and that's it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there any other questions about this event?
My only question is if they would have to abide by the food vendor requirements since their church volunteers are the ones cooking? I guess that's more for you guys.
Yeah, it's gonna, are they, are they vendors or are they church volunteers?
It's gonna be church volunteers just cooking like hot dogs. And then we're just giving out water and chips. So it's just hot dogs on a grill.
Okay. Do they cook from the church facilities or is it trailers or what?
At the church.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a grill, so they'll be cooking outside.
Was there another part to that question or is it?
No, it just, it says if they're gonna have food that they're supposed to provide a specific form. So I was just wondering if that's still required? If the church is the one doing the cooking or not?
Hmm.
That was my only question.
I, I believe we talk about the Department of Business and Professional Regulation Form?
Yes.
And that's actually for businesses. So if they actually have a food truck out there, they would need to have that from the health inspector.
Okay. But if we wanted to have, let's say there was an event on Main Street and there were several restaurants that were serving out of their restaurant, that wouldn't require that, would it?
I wouldn't think so, but I would leave that as a legal question.
Yeah, just a question for future. We obviously have several events on Main Street and those businesses do participate. So just kind of, from my own knowledge.
So Ms. Caraballo, would there or would there not be bounce house, bounce houses?
No, no bounce houses.
Reason why I'm ask, could you check? Yes.
Did I?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no bounce house. I think I put on the paper, no bounce house.
You said no bounce houses, but then you checked. So I was, I was
I think because it, the yes applied to whatever other activities were in the question, but I wanted to specify that there were no bounce houses.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the Spring Festival Event.
I'll make a motion to approve B6 for Union Church to close the road.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you.
Item number seven, we have the Highlands County Sheriff with us tonight, Mr. Paul Blackman. He's gonna give us some good news. We hope.
I hope so too. For the record, Paul Blackman, Highlands County Sheriff, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and present some statistical data for you. Just gonna go over it. So if I get to speaking a little too fast and you want me to stop and go over something, please don't hesitate to ask and, and we'll go back over it. When I go over the information, I'll kind of give you a little foresight of what we're gonna do. I'm gonna talk a little bit about what would be our first quarter of the year, which would be October, October 1st through December 31st. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about our second quarter, which is January 1st through, supposed to be March 31st, but we haven't got there yet. So that, that data will be about seven days short. So just forgive me when, when I get to that part.
All right.
And also please just keep in mind that we are still recovering from a ransomware attack. We think we're about 95, 96% totally recovered. But we do see, see some delays in our detention facility and when we're classifying detainees. So we're, we're seeing a little bit of a lag in that. So, but other than that, we're, we're pretty much back full strength.
We definitely feel for you. We've been there and done that.
I thought, I thought you guys might know what I was talking about. So, all right, so let's get into this. And again, please stop me if, if you have any questions.
All right.
So for the first quarter of our 20, our physical year, 22, 23, again, October 1st through December 31st, that covers about 92 days. Calls for service for the city of Avon Park within the city limits was 4,743. A call for service is anything that a deputy has to respond to, whether that's a, an alarm call, it could be a barking dog, it could be, you know, a fender bender in a parking lot, it could be anything. So 4,743 total calls compared to the county during that same time, we had 16,757 calls for service. So Avon Park, the city of Avon Park generated about 28% of our total calls for service during that 92 day period. So in some cases, a deputy would respond to a call and have to actually write a report. We call those incident reports or offense reports. Of those 4,700 and something calls, a deputy was required to write a report 529 times, as compared to the county, 2,842 times. So about 18% of the total reports written in the county came from the city of Avon Park. Total arrests for the Avon Park city limits during that same period of time was 65 total arrests. Now, these arrests could be for driving on a suspended license, any misdemeanor or any felony. For the county during that same time, we made 285 arrests. So about 23% of the arrests generated during that 92 day period came from the city of Avon Park. The rest of these numbers, I will tell you, I really don't compare the numbers to the county because we just don't track that data for the county. So traffic citations during that 200, I'm sorry, during that 90, two day period was 298. Traffic warnings or verbal or warnings given during a traffic stop, 845. Total traffic crash reports that were taken during that 92 days was 128. We responded to 46 family, family disturbances, what we would require, or what we would call a domestic situation. Approximately 38 batteries, made 33 felony narcotics arrests during that 92 days. Investigated 27 child abuse cases, Baker acted 28 people. Worked 31 retail thefts. Those are all your businesses, your Walmarts, your businesses along 27 that call, someone's taking something without paying for it. Worked 21 burglaries, eight grand thefts. We had zero homicides, but we had five attempted homicides. Four of those cases are still open and one has been closed. Ag assaults, we had five, two of which are still open and three have been closed. And then had five ag batteries, one is open and four of those are closed. And I should give you the definition for us, an open case means it's been assigned to a detective and still being worked. Closed generally means for the most part, that case has been closed with an arrest. However, some of those cases could be where the victim decided to come in and drop the charges or whatever that might be. And that would still show as closed in that, in that case as well. So moving on to the second quarter for the physical year of 22, 23, which would again go from January 1st to March, in this case, March 23rd, which should go to March 31st. But I ran these numbers Friday, so I'm a seven days short of coming up with actual numbers, but it's pretty much the same, would give you about the same read. Calls for service, 4,250. Written reports, 539. Total arrests for the city of Avon Park, 69. 126 citations issued. 586 traffic warnings, whether it be verbal or written given out. Worked 122 traffic crashes. And those crashes, I don't want, I don't want you to think that they're all traffic crashes that were on 27 and there were a bad crash. These could be parking lot fender benders. That's where the majority of that information comes from. We did have one homicide and we have one that's still being, that's still open and being worked at this time. 52 domestic disputes, 38 total thefts, worked 25 child abuse cases. Now, again, not all of those are founded. Those are cases where a deputy had to go out and usually working with someone with DCF and investigate the scene at the house. But we still had to respond and write a report on that. 41 disturbances, 22 burglaries, 36 narcotics cases, and 36, again, with the retail petty theft. So looking at those two quarters combined, nearly 9,000 calls for service, a little over 1,000 reports written, 134 total arrests. About 424 traffic citations, almost 1,500 traffic warnings, 250 traffic crashes that were investigated, and about 128 total arrests. Some other things that happened, and I apologize that I only have this month. So earlier this month, on January 11th, I was invited to the Adventist Church on Howe McCray for a a, I guess, a celebration that they were having regarding first responders and community leaders where they wanted to pray over those that attended. Got the day to spend with them and that was a really good time. And then on January 17th, I met with some business owners here in the city of Avon Park as well, as well as some residents that were having some issues in their area speeding. And they had a few vehicle burglaries that they wanted us, they wanted to talk about. And just by chance, the day that I met with them earlier that day or the day before, we were doing a, a search warrant on a suspect's residence that could have been a burglary suspect and an arms dealer that we have here in, in, in the city of Avon Park. And in that search warrant, we found a bunch of property that belonged to those burglaries at those particular house. So that was a, it was a fortunate on my half that I got to go there and speak with them the day that we were recovering a lot of that stolen property. So it made the sheriff's office look really good in their eyes. So, but regardless, we, we had an opportunity to spend a lot of time together with some business owners and talk about what they would like to see and, and things that we were doing at the sheriff's office. Some things that are happening at the sheriff's office that will be of great interest to you guys. We just named three new sergeants that will be full-time sergeants in the city of Avon Park. One is Melissa Kurtz, Maylin Hernandez, and Elder Salvador. So moving forward is, if you guys have an issue, there will be a sergeant out 24/7 in the city of Avon Park. Feel free to call them. You can still do the process, calling either the captain or the major or myself as you do currently. But if you can't get ahold of one of us, there is a sergeant, there will be a sergeant out all the time in the city of Avon Park to help you with any, any needs you might have. We have got our RTCC fully operational now and staff, so I apologize for using the acronym, it's Real Time Crime Center. So we are using that to supplement our, our law enforcement that are on the street, our deputies and our detectives that are working cases. And that's going, that's going really, really good. We've already made a lot of cases using some technology that we have along Highway 27 and some other corridors that go in and throughout Avon Park city limits. So that's working out real good for us. And then obviously, I'm sure you guys have probably heard, I know I heard over the, over the weekend, we have some more ATV issues going on. So we're in the process of putting together a few details. I don't know why these folks think they can drive these things up and down the hard road and in the city, but we're, we're aware of it. In case any of your constituents call you, we, we are certainly aware and starting to put together another detail. Hopefully we can make some arrests on that, but I can fill you in on that as we go. And then last thing that we're kind of watching that we think might kind of affect the city is some of the Senate bills that are going through the, the legislation right now, particularly one constitutional carry, which we are 100% confident that it will pass. So some things that we, we need to look at, probably educate our, our citizens that we serve, like you guys and us through county on what, what constitutional carry means to them and, and what they can do to, to stay safe and, and what it actually means.
Sure. Yeah, no, we would be very appreciative of any of the new stuff that's coming down, help us do some education here in Avon Park, make sure everybody understands what's going on at the state level. So.
Yeah, our PIO Scott and I and, and Garrett Roberts, our general counsel, we've been working closely, following, tracking them through the, through the House and through the Senate. So that when they do come out, we're ready with a, with an informational piece at least to get out. We, we have a lot of followers on our social media that we can try to explain it. So no one inadvertently gets in any type of trouble or what that actually means for them as a citizen.
Okay.
I opened it up. That's all I have for stats. I have some of those stats for you if you want to look at a hard copy of them.
That's what I was gonna ask is if there's any way you could email to the city and
I will, I can bet or I can give you a hard copy tonight.
Okay, that, that works too.
But and I'll open it up to any questions that you guys might have.
You have any, any questions for Sheriff?
I just have a couple.
Okay.
Not the major. First of all, it looks like you guys have been really busy. So congratulations on that. I, I, Avon Park does keep you busy. The first question is the last time you were here, I think we were gonna hire additional, what, four more traffic people or officers and four sergeants to refind, get all those.
So we have the two, two deputies that I want to say right after that initial meeting, our contract signing, we put them, we put them in the city of Avon Park. We put them on what we call a 12 to 12, a two to two power shift type thing, reading, going back and seeing when our most calls for service were coming in. And that's when we deployed those, those units. We now have, and then we, we also had a sergeant, sergeant Gunn that was assigned up here full time. Like I said earlier, today, or not today, earlier this week, we promoted, earlier last week, we promoted three new sergeants. So they will be, I mean, as soon as they get through their sergeant FTO phase, which is a couple of weeks of training, supervisory training, they'll be deployed out here. And we're still in the process of hiring. We have three, I think, that are in the academy now. And I know I have at least one folder on my desk for the next academy. We're, we're struggling and getting certified deputies to put in that come from, from other parts of Florida. We are getting some from, from northern states. But when they come down and put in, they still have to take an equivalency test to prepare them for Florida state laws. So we've hired a gentleman from New York and a gentleman from Chicago that are, that are coming down. They've enjoyed the first winter. We'll see if they enjoy the first summer. So it's, that's up in the air.
Started that.
Yeah, so, but we're, we're still getting there. And yes, we, we will definitely get those extra two Okay. as soon as we possibly can.
Have you had any problems keeping some of these two new people that they just don't like it or just don't make it?
So far, we, we've been, we've been very fortunate. We are seeing some retirements. People that are getting, you know, getting their service in and Governor DeSantis has, has allowed us to extend the drop an additional three years for those that are currently in the drop and up to this point had to leave at five years. Probably five or six are interested in, in extending another three years. Lieutenant Bailey, I don't know if any of you guys know him, he hit his 25 and he said, no, thank you to the, to the next three years. He said he was ready to start the next chapter. So we've had a few retirements like that, but that's, that was about it. We've got one gentleman who is, who's a sergeant, who I think he's in the hiring process with Palm Beach County. So we might lose him, but, but you just never know. You never know.
Do we actually have a, like a traffic control unit that's going out there to try to keep these people from speeding, not only on 27, but also in parts of the city limits?
So we don't, we don't have a unit that's specifically designated to just do traffic enforcement. So what we will do is we seek out grants, which in the city of Avon Park, a few years ago, we got a pretty good grant that we could use those monies that we were able to obtain there to pay overtime. So those, those deputies that were off duty, we would pay them to come in, pay them time and a half. And then they would focus specifically on traffic. I have committed to the county commission that if we can fill up our vacancies, which we have about 15 to 20 vacancies on law enforcement side. If we could fill those up, I think I could restructure some of the, some of the current squads and create a traffic unit to try to prevent from paying additional funds. But the, 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 the hard part is gonna be filling those vacant positions. I've been there for 30 years now. Well, September 1st will be 30 years for me. And I don't know that I've ever seen a time when we've ever been full. So it's, it's tough. Yeah, nobody wants to be in law enforcement these days.
The, the only comments I ever get from citizens are basically mainly those that are too many, too many speeding people, whether it's in the city or on 27.
And how, how we generally handle that, if we get a complaint from a citizen, that the group that I met with earlier, that was one of their problem, or one of their issues. I won't say a problem, it was an issue. So we did some directed patrol. We had some, some deputies that were assigned to the Avon Park here. We said, hey, look, go to this particular street. We want you there for these, these particular times and, and enforce some traffic. And, and they did. And the citizens were seemed to be pretty happy over here behind the Jacaranda, a few streets behind the Jacaranda. Maybe two, three weeks ago, we had a similar complaint and that's kind of how we handle that. If they can give us the, you know, the times, it's usually morning traffic or afternoon traffic, we will, we will concentrate enforcement in that area during that time and try to slow, try to slow folks down for a little bit.
I just have one more question and, and a good comment. All right. The one question I remember, we used to have a patrol car out there on 27, just kind of parked in the medium. Have you thought about doing that? Does that ever work out? Is that worthwhile or just?
So it, it did work. We, we, we put unmanned vehicles at some of our high crash intersections that we, we, you know, gathered some statistical data and we found out, these are the intersections that were, crashes were most likely happening. And when there was a crash, there was a generally a deadly crash. So we, to up the presence, we took some of our, our vehicles that nobody was assigned to and assigned them there. We even put a bear or something in one of them. It did create a lot of phone calls from me. People would call in, say, you know, you have a deputy sleeping at the intersection of 98 and 27. Now, well, thank you for letting me know, but I knew that was either a mannequin or a bear sitting there. But it did work. It lowered our numbers. So we kind of took the cards out a little bit and then it did a traffic, a traffic detail. Because folks got used to seeing a car just sitting there with nobody in it. So then we put one there with somebody and, and it kind of worked. So maybe it's time to revisit doing that again because the presence does help.
Yeah, just the visual aid, I think, does 99% of the work with traffic.
There, there's some research out there that says traffic citations don't alter behavior, but just the presence of a, of a vehicle does alter that behavior. So, you know, it, it certainly works.
I've yet to see someone willing to speed past a cop on the road, so.
Very seldom does that happen.
If you don't mind, I do have a compliment that actually personally happened to me, I think, I believe it was last week, this was the week before. Somebody basically, I won't say that they attempted to break into my house, but let's just say they banged on the door really, really, really hard for a long time in middle of night. I was, not in the middle of night, it was it was about nine, nine o'clock in that, actually.
Yes, sir.
And I, I was up and awake and, and so I immediately got up and there was nobody there at the front door, checked the back door, make sure all lights were on. I do have a lot of lights around my house and everything else. So I just thought it'd be a good idea just to report it because it happened one time, a long time ago. I figured it's probably misshift, but I just figured I, I would just call. I didn't call 911.
Sure.
And I made a call and just told them what happened. And they said they'd probably send somebody out. And I was surprised. I, I didn't really think anybody would actually come by and knock on my door, but about less than five minutes, one of your sheriff knocks on my door really hard. I thought, who is this? You know, and he says sheriff department. Oh, thanks. So I went out there and, you know, he told me it's probably just either teenagers or some crazy adults just harassing something crazy to do. And then they happened to be fast runners because I was at that door quick and I didn't see anybody. And I got plenty of lights. And he also told me that there was another patrolman that would be driving around looking at, in my neighborhood for a while. And I actually saw him go by. So I give kudos for you that, that you called, that basically I did get a response. And I'm, I'm not concerned about it, but I'm just glad that you guys were there. And so I really appreciate the things you do. Obviously, you're really busy. You guys are doing a good job. I can't wait. You got, you know, full force out there. And so thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely. My pleasure and thank you for your very kind words.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
Yeah, I have something for him. How you doing, Sheriff Blackman?
I'm doing good, ma'am.
I get the opportunity from time to time when I see you, we have a little chat or two, and you always asking me how things are going. And first of all, I like to start off saying I think your deputies are doing a good job when it come, come to those ATVs. Okay, we haven't just, they haven't just completely stopped, but a year ago, it was out of hand. So we've, we've, we get in control of that. I appreciate it. We're getting control of the music. I used to complain about the music that takes place over there in the south side. I had a lot of residents complaining. You gotta get up and go to work the next morning and the music is off the change. I'm here to report to you that that hasn't ceased, but it has gotten better. And I appreciate that. But it has gotten better and I appreciate that. One day last week, I got about three phone calls of residents on the south side. They said they was awakened by bullet shots about four, around about three fifteen in the morning. And I couldn't answer their question because I was out of town, but I, since you were here, I wanted to ask you. What is the sheriff doing in the violence? And mostly it's going on around that area where Carolina and Fred Connors. Residents that they're calling me a lot and they're very, they're very concerned. They're they're concerned that a bullet is gonna come through their window at night. So Sheriff, maybe you can help me and the people that sit out in the audience. What do what is the sheriff department doing about curbing the violence and the shooting?
This is not just in Avon Park. We would do this anywhere in the county that that we see a rise in violent types of crimes. So we have particular units that are that we use to go in and handle situations such as that, so that would be our tac team. We also have a cops adapt unit with Lieutenant Tyson and in that group. I'm sure you've met them. And and the events that I see you at, I know those gentlemen and that team is at those groups too. So we would take and send them into those units to try to first the cops unit to make and build relationships. So so the community has someone that they can trust and come talk to and give information, and then we would also send our undercover guys and our tac guys in there. If there's people in there that have warrants or something of that nature, specifically with the task of going in there and trying to take those folks off the street. It's generally those folks that are doing these types of shootings. And 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 again, it doesn't matter if it's at Fred Connor Street or the south side of Avon Park. If it's happening in in Avon Park Lakes, if it's happening in the Country Club of Seabrook, we're going to send a a team in there to try to handle. And reduce that as quickly as we possibly can.
Okay, and my next question is. This particular area that I pointed out, are deputies riding around certain time of the night because of the problem? And my question to you is, did you get that, did you get a report like Monday last week? I want to say it was stern sheet that that was shooting in the area. Did that report ever make it to your desk?
I get a report every single day. Actually, I get two, what we call pass downs, so pretty much every single call that the deputies go on. During a twelve-hour shift, I get that as long, as well as my undersheriff, my majors and and all the captains. It is passed along every single day. Do I specifically remember that particular shooting? I I you haven't really given me enough detail to to tell me which one it actually was. But I I see those every single day, yes, ma'am, twice a day, really.
So are the deputies roaming that that particular area? Are they roaming the areas at night, a certain time of night?
Yes, ma'am.
Or no?
Yes, ma'am, they they absolutely are, and it's not just deputies in green and white cars, it's deputies in unmarked cars as well.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, if you, just real quick, if you give me the the times, the date, that one, I can tell you. How long it took a deputy to get there or how long a deputy stayed in there, but I'm just gonna need a little bit more information.
Any other questions for the sheriff? Seeing none, Sheriff, just wanna congratulate you and some of your guys that unfortunately. Had the opportunity to work with some of your great detectives recently. I was very impressed with how well they handled the situation. They have some very innovative ways of of catching criminals these days, as I've learned, and just want to thank you guys for the great job that you guys did.
It's very kind words, and if you don't mind, I'll approach and give you guys this. I I made five copies, so if you want me to email you one or.
Thank you. And the city staff will make a copy of this, make sure everybody has a digital copy.
I can get mine emailed if somebody wants mine. Do you want mine?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, because I'll have Chrissy email me mine. Just email me.
Sheriff, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right, up next we have item number eight. This will be the Lakeside Historical Cemetery Consultant, Mr. Matt Davis. If you will, just give your name and organization for the record.
Matt Davis, thank you. I'm just a retired consultant. I work with the Gordon and Strange families on a number of improvement projects for the last couple of years.
Okay.
I'm here specifically and I want to thank the council and Chrissy for allowing me here. I'm here today to talk very quickly about a piece of, a parcel of property that that within the city boundaries. It's six plus acres. It's been within the city a couple hundred years. It's the Lakeside African American Historical Cemetery. For years, almost dating back, and Ms. Johnson and others in the room here could tell you. How far it goes back with maintaining those grounds. Those grounds have been maintained by basically a board of trustees, volunteers, community action. City action, and so when COVID came and with the age of the trustees. That piece of property has now kind of fallen, not in disarray, but just has fallen into where it needs to maintain. This is a piece of property that has over three hundred families buried in it. Founding members of the city of Avon Park. There's a lot of history there. I would offer that this is a point and an opportunity for the city. To invest in the past and see a return of the future. With the stories, when I just reached out to some of the citizens of Avon Park outside of the Gordon and Strange family. They would tell me their great-great-grandmother and great-great-uncles are interned and buried and and in there. You have veterans of Avon Park in that facility, in that property, and so I've come to the city tonight. To simply ask to, let's look at ways that we can quickly. Bring some life to that piece of property. Help the citizens of Avon Park create a place of destination here. Can you imagine the stories that are that are within that piece of property? Today, there is money available for African American cemeteries. This is a historical cemetery that lies within the city. I can tell you that this is the second stop that I've had. I went to the county originally because when I looked at the property, it did not really see that there was kind of an ownership of. If you will, the county historical preservation committee. Is very interested in partnering with the city and also partnering with the community. I will be in front of that group on April twelfth, speaking to them in exactly the same terms I'm speaking to you. The trustee group has basically maintained this piece of property since nineteen thirties. A simple maintenance of the property, and when I'm talking about that, I mean, cutting the grass. Making sure that the entrance is presentable. There's a fence around the property. Let's make sure that it looks presentable. It's not a lot of investment. Again, I'm looking to invest for the future. So people can bring their family in there and talk about my great-grandmother that's that's interned in this facility. So I want to leave you here tonight with the with the assurance. That on April twelfth, I will be speaking to the historical preservation committee. I'm going to ask them at that time to supply the city, since it's in within your boundary, funds. But I am asking the city to look at this piece of property and and really see what you can do to invest. And and really have involvement. The simplest things like listing the cemetery on the city's website. The simplest things like perhaps once a quarter, having a a community activity. Where you could have the schoolchildren come in and and have people talk about what's in there. Simple little investment that we can do without spending a lot of money. So I want to thank you for your time. I will tell you that I will be back. And I look forward to working with the city and trying to help this group. Any questions for me?
Yes, I have one. You mentioned that there was monies available for these historic cemeteries?
Yes.
What type of funds are we talking? Is this city or, excuse me, is this state or federal type?
At the federal level, there is a National Preservation Institute that actually has a two-day. Session that you can actually learn how to actually preserve a cemetery, and if you want, I will leave this copy with you all.
If you will, give it to the staff and they'll make a copy for all of us. I'd be interested to see what the the county board has to say about, you know, obviously, the issue with these types of properties is the ongoing maintenance, right? You know, you can pretty much get any group together to do something once. It's the ongoing is what you really. Struggle to do, so I'd be interested to see what type of ongoing funding is out there, just something I've never really looked into from a grant perspective, so.
Well, I I've found that, and I agree with you, it's the ongoing, and I think that with a community action group. With county involvement, city involvement. That sometimes the partnership is able to maybe get themselves through that. And I think that, that's why I'm saying, I think if we show cooperation between all of us, you may still end up with volunteers doing this job. So it it it's more of just like I said, taking the investment and and getting the return, so.
We certainly appreciate any information that you have.
Yes, ma'am.
Where where's the meeting?
April twelfth is the meeting with the Historical Preservation Committee in Seabrook, yes, ma'am. I don't have the address with me. I will be more than happy to email it to you.
What time?
I believe it's at six o'clock also.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Davis? Seeing none, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
And Bernice, if you will, pull that microphone closer to your mouth there. Item number nine, we have a request in the council to change a code, code to enable them to build homes on smaller lots, et cetera. This is Mr. Juan Carlos with Urban One L L C. If you will, please give your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Juan Carlos Cachamani with Urban One Development.
Okay, all right, so do we have Jeff on the Zoom?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, thank you very much. Jeff, do you want to give us an overview on this property?
Actually, if we could, I think it would be best if we could hear from the applicant. We're here to answer any questions. I will just preface that we did have a pre-application meeting with these folks. Believe late February. It's a request to develop a piece of property or two pieces of property, actually. One is still in the county right now. The applicant, I'm sure will will go through that. Looking at some additional density in the city, and I think that's why they wanted to approach you all tonight to discuss some options.
Okay, Mr. Carlos, if you will, give us an overview of what you're trying to do. We obviously have the the documents that you submitted already, so we should be familiar, but we'd like to hear it from you.
Perfect. Like, I don't know if it was Mr. LaBelle that was speaking before?
That was Jeff on Central Florida Regional Planning. He was on Zoom.
Perfect, yeah. We had a, we had a meeting because we received a letter that was sent to the original owners of the property. Where certain specific densities were specified, like twelve units per acre in the northern side of the property. In the north, in five hundred South Marshall Avenue and six units per acre. In the meeting that we have, it was exposed to us that the county would, the city actually would prefer to maintain the same. Standard of units that are in the adjacent area, and basically, we're talking lots, they were like a hundred and twenty by a hundred and twenty or a hundred by a hundred and twenty deep. In addition, we were told that the right-of-way requirements were sixty-foot. And sixty feet is a is a substantially large right-of-way. What we are looking to do in this property, and that's why I really appreciate it, we take the time, because this is really like an exchange, exchange really of ideas if we can be done. Our our company idea is to build houses that are more affordable and to build homes for labor force or for retired people. We've been looking at this county for the past two years, and the new homes are all, all of them are over three hundred thousand dollars, the new ones. And basically, there is a factor of mathematics. When you take big lots, there are ten thousand, twelve thousand square foot, and you put sixty-foot right-of-ways, the cost of infrastructure. And the density will definitely will not allow us to build homes in a price lesser than the standard in the market. So one of the things that we wanted to do is to develop a community, and it's a trend that is changing in the whole state of Florida, because we have a crisis. We have a housing crisis. Hot says that we have a housing crisis, there was seven million units. That's something crazy for a state, there were only twenty-two million people, okay? So it means that the housing sector is affected extremely heavy. Our goal is actually to build homes in the nine hundred to twelve hundred square feet, to build homes, they have lots that are almost forty-nine foot wide. The right-of-way that we're proposing is at about thirty-seven, I think it was, the last one that we designed. And the idea is to build a home that. Very nice, to build neighborhoods, actually, in the photographs that we sent, we saw them in other places that have been done. And the idea is to be able to lower the cost, because at the end of the day, the more frontage we have, the more streets that we're giving just for one house. So it's very inefficient for us to make these units. This is the same site, based on the parameters that the city gave us. Actually, we did them actually a little bit smaller. And we only get like twenty-seven, twenty-eight units. So our cost per unit is tremendous, and then we go back to producing a house that's gonna be a market house. We have to be in the three forty, three sixty. You know, three seventy range in order to compensate all the infrastructure costs. They have substantially gone up since COVID started. We're proposing, for example, the road to have a thirty-seven-foot right-of-way with a five-foot sidewalk and to have curves. It will be fully structured. The homes will have. Total privacy. We we don't want to do high density. For example, next door to this property, there is a project that. It was though maybe many, many years ago, it's very small. It has a density of ten units per acre, and it's adjacent on the west side of the property. And it's poorly designed, so that's not the idea. The idea is to make single-family homes. We have a high school in front of us. So the idea is to be able to offer the labor force a more affordable product, but of a high quality. And the only way that we can maintain the quality is only to make the the development smaller, so that you, the unit cost becomes smaller, but not the quality of the units. We're seeing a growth in trailer parks. We want to see those go away in Florida with the hurricanes, you know, every time we get a hurricane, that's a situation that we have.
Agreed.
And 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 it's not a good standard of living, it's not a good standard of product. These are gonna be homes built, you know, by new codes with all hurricane standards. High efficiency. We are a company that promotes, you know, energy savings through technology and design. And the whole idea was to exchange ideas with you guys, because a one hundred and twenty-foot lot or a hundred and twenty-wide lot with a sixty-foot right-of-way. It's impossible to us to develop nothing at a reasonable cost, and I think that the people of Avon Park, you have a huge percentage of people who deserve the right to have. A very nice home, but at an affordable price. We are sacrificing size, guys, because unfortunately, it's a problem that we have is. You know, some people have the big Toyota, we're making the Corolla, the little one, but it still is a super high-quality product. And we wanted to know if something like this of a high standards and will be. Developed together with the commission, together with you guys, with the Department of Zoning and everything, to make sure that the product that is done is high-quality. We don't want to make something that's gonna be, you know, bad for the community. We want something that is gonna be better for the community. We've seen it in in many states happening. They develop very nicely and the architecture is, when the architecture is done, the the urban planning is well done. And we're serving a market that appreciates that kind of product. This is not, we don't want nothing that has a government assistance. Because we want to avoid that. We want people to know that they own their home, they respect it, and they respect their community. But we need assistance in the sense of zoning. We need this kind of densities, this kind of right-of-ways to be able to make it work. So the question is, is this something that the commission see that we can do?
Sure, so there's there's a couple of obvious hurdles that you have to overcome, so. I know one of the reasons why the the right-of-ways are what they are is basically so that we can maintain our trucks, get our equipment in and out, everything like that. The other thing would be that if we, you know, simply change our regulations at the base level. Now it's open for citywide, right? So, you know, you might be a great developer and you're gonna do a great job on this project. Everybody might not be, so we have to kind of think about, you know, the ramifications that have in the citywide. But one idea that came to mind right off the bat was, have you thought about doing like a townhome design? Or possibly multiple units next to each other that would still get you the same density, but it. Avoids the issue of having to change a lot size.
Well, we think that we we are doing actually a development north of here, eighty-eight townhomes. It's a different economic level. But still, we believe that people like a home. In our research, we found that there is a total change in behavior and privacy.
Just to be clear, did you say you're doing a development like this north of here, or you're doing a townhome?
A townhome development.
Okay.
We do it in Lake Nona in Orlando. We're doing a development there. So we're very familiar with all this density. We prefer always to go single-family home. We found, and our company has a long trajectory developing affordable housing, and there is something about multifamily that we find psychologically. People like much better when it's a single-family home. It's cheaper for us to build townhomes. But we find that that is, people still have that sense of pride when it's your home, my back. But we find that that is, people still have that sense of pride when it's your home, my backyard. In these little homes, they have a space even to put a little pool, to put a barbecue. It's more, uh, it's a psychological factor that we find, uh. It's not that I'm gonna discharge your comment. We will analyze it, but we wanted to avoid a multifamily look, that density look. And and that is something that um. It's another strategy that people are also looking into to make it more like a little neighborhood look. Like a an old Florida type of look in the neighborhood, walkable neighborhood. As far as the trucks, uh, with a twenty-seven foot right-of-way, like actual. Paved area because we, we is not designed for cars to be parking on the road. We don't want that to be happening. We're providing parking. In in each individual load and they will meet all of the fire core requirements for the truck, turning radius and circulation.
Are these uh, wood frame homes or are they concrete?
There will be CBS block construction, yeah.
Alright. Do you have any other questions for for Mr. Carlos?
I have just one question. You're showing these as being between nine hundred and eleven hundred square feet. And you're showing the price range, I guess that's two hundred and twenty-five thousand to two hundred and forty-five thousand? And then I have one question for Jeff. If you don't mind, please, Jeff, do we have any homes like this in Avon Park with that? Type of um, uh, square footage for the property and the home itself?
We would have to look to see. Generally, the city does not. Um, if you do recall, there was a a PUD that had come through about a year ago. That we've been working with an applicant on through a subdivision process, um, down to fifty-foot wide lots. Up near, well, just north of uh, Main Street, up near the Winthrop, I believe Winthrop Street area, uh, Avon Manners. That has not moved through to today. Um, but those, those would be some of the smaller lots in terms of a new subdivision. That um, has looked to come in. Um, I will say that the, I think the main concern, the two main concerns that we had. Uh, when we met with these folks um, in February, one was looking at this particular area of the city. Yes, there is a. A development to the west, the um, the Las Palmas Resort, which was was developed a number of years ago. I believe it was probably developed in the county at some point. Um, and then annexed into the city. Um, it's somewhat of an anomaly in this area. Most of the area to the to the east, still in the county, is is ag. Um, but it is residential medium with. With single-family residential zoning. Um, when we spoke with the applicant about this request. Um, other than the Las Palmas area that's directly to the west, the majority of the properties out in this area are larger properties, um, eighty to hundred-foot wide lots. I will say that the. One of the main things we look at is characteristic of the surrounding area and how this becomes compatible. So looking at the property that the applicants were, were looking to. Excuse me, develop. Um, it almost triples the number of lots on a property. Near what we would say are larger properties, lower density. Um, now they are wanting to work within the density. Of um, I guess what's assigned to the county right now. Uh, the portion of the property they're looking to develop that's in the city. Which is about four acres or so. Um, it has a low-density residential with one of the higher zoning categories on it right now. Or lower-density categories on it right now. So that would have to be amended and increased as well. So. I I believe there's opportunity to look at something to develop here. Um, we just need to be cognizant of how it fits with the character of the area. If it's something that the city would be interested in entertaining, we can, we can certainly look. To move forward and work with the applicant on that. It would likely come through a PUD process. I don't think that there's. Well, and we'll take the direction of of council and staff, but uh, to create a whole new zoning district or look at. Uh, potential amendments to the current zoning districts, as you mentioned, Mayor, um, we can't look at that in a bubble at one, one piece of property. We have to think about that across the citywide. If we, if we amend that code, that affects properties through the entire city. The reason we have a PUD process is essentially to accommodate unique developments like this. So. That would probably be the potential avenue to go to look at something. Um, but again, that, the characteristic of the area was the, was the one concern on our end. The utilities was the other. Um, sixty-foot right-of-ways is is pretty typical um, anywhere in our region. Highlands County off also requires sixty-foot of right-of-way. You gotta think in addition to the paved area for, for trucks, for garbage, for fire. You've got utilities as well. So I think one of the the concerns that we had had was, well, where do the utilities go? How do we create easements for that? How do we create access for that or dedications for that? Uh, thirty feet is not a whole lot of right-of-way uh, to provide for those services. So. We're certainly willing to to sit down and entertain some ideas uh, to see how that might work. But that's, that's essentially where we had, we had left the conversation at, um, until we had gotten word that the, the developer wanted to speak with you all to see if there was. Any additional opportunities or suggestions by council to to give any guidance on this.
Definitely the PUD sounds like the way to go, uh, just so we don't have ripple effects throughout the city. It would be more or less a testbed, I guess, so. Definitely am liking that idea. Is there any other questions for the applicant or for Jeff?
I have one question for you, sir. Do you plan on putting any amenities out on this location? You know, walking trails, uh, pools or?
Yes, we're leaving actually. The, the idea was that this would be a property dedicated to the city. So that the roads, they will be non-HOA. So I don't know if the PUE requires that, but that's something that we can definitely analyze. In a regional design, we did have a small clubhouse and what we did here is leave green areas and parks.
That's what I thought it was, okay.
And the idea was because when we originally were looking at this, based on the documents that we got from the county. It said that we had a density of twelve units per acre, future use density. And we're asking less than nine or eight, eight points, something, I think. And in the lower part, where it's only six units per acre, we were planning to put a retention ponds. Park in any area so that we will not impact that six units per acre. So we will leave the higher density a little bit on the upper part. And uh, but definitely, the problem we find with facilities is that people don't want HOAs. We love to do communities with HOA. We don't communities with clubhouses, pools and everything. Uh, but they become a higher scale. They require an investment. And today, you know, with the inflations that we have, that if you analyze that. The per income in Florida right now, people are impacted so hard that to put even a one hundred dollars a month or eighty dollars a month impact fee that can impact in people's food. And people's insurance and gasoline. So we want to maintain it. That's why we're saying, we want this to be economically to operate, economically. To purchase and and materials that are high quality so they don't have to be painting the house every, you know, five or six years. They impose a cost. You know, when we build a luxury community, if people spend two thousand dollars a month, then they don't care. When you own a house and. And you have two people working in this, in this household and you have to send kids to school and recreation and your car and insurance and. So on, so on, so on. A hundred to a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars a month can impact heavily. We're willing, guys, we, we're willing to work with you guys. We want to build this. We, our focus is to be able to provide housing for, for people to afford it. And not only labor force. Also, we have, we have a huge community of retired people right now. They have to live in trailers. We've seen it throughout the state of Florida. It's not Avon Park. We've seen in expensive places as Naples, everywhere. And 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 it's not in a standard of living. I think that we can create something first class. And we will work jointly with you guys. And if it has to be through a PUD and specify specific characteristics to make it look good. There was a mention about the right, the the right-of-way for utilities. That's something that we can engineer into the design because we have certain setbacks. Even if the right, the actual physical right-of-way is thirty-seven, we can leave other zones specifically designed in the setbacks for accommodate underground. Utilities. We don't want to have electricity overhead. We don't want to have any of this obsolete, you know, infrastructure. That only brings problem. Every time there is a hurricane. The first thing goes down is that.
We know all about that.
You guys know that.
Just out of curiosity, how long has your company been around?
Well, we've been in Florida since nineteen seventy-eight. We're a family. We're all, he's gonna laugh, but you, all of us are Kachamani's. We're. Four of us are here today. My brother, two of our brothers-in-law that work with us. We have another brother who is in Miami. So we've been around for sixty years. I'm a third-generation builder, developer, architect. So we've been in Florida for a long time.
Very good. Have you built uh, any facilities that look similar to this?
Yes, we have.
Have you done any of those in in what I would consider rural Florida, meaning the the center of the state, not necessarily in, in Orlando or on the coast, but kind of in a more rural area?
Well, I built it, believe it or not, in the US Virgin Islands in San Thomas. We've been affordable housing there. Very nice. They look actually like a country club and we can send you. Photos of a, in affordable, and this is with the government. They did not put anything. It's just nominated because they get a special mortgages. But it's enough and it looks beautiful. You have to see this project.
Okay. Yeah, I would love to see any of those photos. Obviously, the main concern that we're gonna have is is what happens long-term, right? So we want obviously to encourage whatever type of facilities that are going to still look good in fifty years, a hundred years. Yeah, we don't want to see neighborhoods go down. Uh, we don't want, one of the, the problems that seems to be is like with the Las Palmas area that you've mentioned to the west there. They are individually owned and they're individually owned rentals, which is kind of odd, you know, because they're, they're, they're individually owned condos. And sometimes you have one owner that owns both condos. Sometimes they only own one and somebody owns the other one, then they're renting them out to people. They're. They're uh, landowners that don't live here necessarily. And that's why I think you see a lot of uh, the deterioration in that little neighborhood. So with this, obviously, there's no way that we could guarantee that the homeowners that buy them are gonna actually live there. But have you given that any thought of uh, basically people from up north or something are gonna buy these and then just simply rent them out? So. Would, would people be able to rent these out or would the, the owners have to occupy them?
Well, like I said, this is not a government. Program that requires, you know, to sell it or rent it. This is a privately owned. The people can, obviously, people can buy it and rent it. People can, can do what they want. I think that these are a price point. The project next door to us. Is, is a little bit like dated. It's much smaller than this. It's a different typology. I think that these homes, even if they rented, they will rent it at a different price point. Uh, it will require. Different maintenance. Uh, it's a, it's a good question, but it's a tough question to ask. I think that the quality of the product. And the typology, for example, the project next door has a tennis court that. It has become abandoned. There is a pool that it looks decrepit. So those facilities that why we don't want to put, because we know people are not gonna use it. You know, I prefer the people buy their homes and they put a little pool in the back. And that's why we're living, that's why we think of the idea of a house. If you can afford to have a little pool, and a lot of people will, because I think that this is gonna service a lot of people who are in the service market. The people who are the carpenters, the plumbers, professors, you know, the school, we have military people here, the retired people. So we. We think that this product lends themselves because when it's a home, they can bring the pickup into the parking and, you know. Apartment buildings, townhomes is very uncomfortable. You know, these people can have their little jet ski put inside their, the roof area. So. I, I think it's a, it's a different typology. It's not, I cannot guarantee you guys that it will be maintained impeccable, but what we have seen historically in the last years. The nicer you make it, and we are not at a price point that is super cheap, is inexpensive in today's market, obviously. But I think it's, it's good enough for people to guarantee that they will treat them better than next door. And 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 public facilities, people don't maintain it. Like you said, a lot of people are not, if they're not owned it and they don't live there, they don't, they don't want to pay in HOA. We have problems even in luxury projects, people paying HOA. It's incredible.
Now, the people that are buying from you guys, uh, are, are they getting their own financing? You guys aren't providing the financing or anything?
We help them. We always help them. You know, if it's first-time buyers, we have a lot of mortgage companies.
But they're going through traditional banks and things.
We, yeah, but there is a lot of programs in the state of, of Florida. What I'm trying to say, this is not section eight. We don't want something subsidized. We don't want something holding people. You know, we want something to be a free market because we have retired people and we have people who are labor. What we're gonna help them is to get the best mortgages they can. Guys, the, from the business point of view, we want something that sells as soon as possible. So the better looking we make it, the more affordable we make, it's gonna move faster. And that is our goal, is to achieve housing for people. Because right now in the state of Florida, is it becomes very difficult for us to do it. It's becoming very difficult. Some counties have recognized it. Some cities have recognized it. They're changing zoning. Miami that is considered now more expensive than New York and Los Angeles. This is crazy to think about it. And when I used to study in the University of Miami, Miami was a sleepy town. You know, half of the year, there was nobody there. And now it has become super expensive. And the city is changing. It's, it's changing to the point that they have now allowed lots that are two thousand square feet. And now they have something that I don't like too much, what is called communal living. I don't know if you know what that is. I'm, I'm not in favor of that. I think that's a little bit crazy. But it's coming. It's coming because of the huge need for housing. So what we want to do is jump ahead and we say, okay. We know we all love to have big homes and sixteen hundred, eighteen hundred square foot, but it's not anymore what we can. What we want. It's really what we can afford. And what we can afford today is not in the market. It doesn't exist. It's pushing thousands of families into rental forever. So this is a way to at least bring certain families out of their rental cycle into ownership. Is that what we want?
Very good. Any other questions for either Jeff or the developer?
Uh, I just have one comment that uh. Many years ago, in my younger days, I lived in Orange County, California, and I lived in a attached townhome, but uh, two bedroom, two bath, eleven hundred square feet. And for me, it was absolutely perfect. It was fine. Everything was pretty much open. But it wasn't attached home and you had people next door to you and people in a sidewalk next to that. And basically, the second bedroom. It was it, it was almost impossible to have somebody come over and spend the night because other than a, a couch, I couldn't fit anything else in there. So I can't imagine you building a home eleven hundred square feet with a three-bedroom. Where the bedrooms would be, other than putting a twin bed in, two of the bedrooms would actually work. So I have a hard time seeing. How that size home would sell for that price. That's just my own personal opinion.
Well, we designed this prototype, but it's just a prototype. We're still designing, but this one, the bedrooms are not as small. These bedrooms are all ten by ten minimum. And the master, I think it was actually like fourteen by ten or fourteen by eleven. So it's not a small room. Is that, and we designed it in a way that when you enter, the kitchen is actually in the beginning, but it opens into the back. So a lot of homes today, you enter. And you don't see nothing because you have the rooms in the back. And we don't like that. I think that what we wanted to do here is the same we have in an expensive home. That you enter and you have your backyard and your pool and everything. So we did it in a small house. Our house opens to the back. The master bedrooms opens to the back. So you can have your, your roof area if you want to add it. You can have your barbecue area. So it's the same lifestyle of a big house, but in a, in a more smaller, compact. Area. We, we have to get used to a little bit smaller today, but not lose the quality. That's what we want.
Alright. Well, I just have a question for staff. Do you guys see any uh. Utility problems to overcome here that would prevent us from, uh, what, what I'm considering is, is letting them go through the, the PUD process. And just see where that gets us. Do you guys see any opposition to that?
No, I think it's a good way to go.
Alright, well, my suggestion would be to uh, allow them to go to the, through the PUD process. Obviously, Jeff would have to have a meeting with them beforehand to see. Some more particulars on it, but um, we definitely don't want to make changes to our zonings that would be citywide. The PUD would allow it to be strictly for this property only. Um, it would be kind of a, a testbed, if you will, to see. How well this project would work out. Um, so that would be my suggestion. Any comments or?
I would, I'd just simply suggest that uh, Jeff um, come back with, you know, some kind of a. Uh, discussion about it because I think there's a concern with regard to whether it's compatible with the neighboring area. And um, I think that that's something you need to address if it's not compatible. Before you move forward with a PUD circumstance. And I, I'm just a little bit nervous about um, a project that doesn't want to have an HOA. Because HOAs are what keep the neighborhoods nice. And I, I mean, I, I don't like to be told what to do and like it, like. Any other person, but by the same token, I don't want, you know, a purple house in my neighborhood. And I don't want the, the person that doesn't. Do their lawn and the lawn's dead and things like that. Those are all things that HOAs prevent. So.
And this is, this is Jeff. I'll, I'll just add to that too. Conversation we've had in a number of communities right now too, is, is the, the maintenance and operations. So when we talk about stormwater and utilities, we want to be clear on that as well. And I think an HOA is a, is a good tool for that as well. Particularly when it comes to mowing and maintaining stormwater areas. A lot of the times, um, the developers want to dedicate that over. And that becomes an incurred expense on the, the, the city. Uh, but an HOA is, is another tool to cover some of those items as well. But we'll, what we'll do is we'll, we'll work with um, utilities and public works department. And the applicant to see if there's, if there's an avenue to get to where they're looking um, to go. That would be um, realistic to, to drop these, these right-of-ways down. To such a small, small area to, to suffice for the infrastructure that would need to go in. And then how potentially that could be managed. And then, of course, uh, we do, we do need to look at the, the character of the area.
I have a question. This is for the gentleman. Um, what is the general racial breakdown of the community that you have built? Um, are they targeting Hispanic, African-Americans, whites?
We don't target any group in particular. This is open to the public. Everybody.
Which, what group has particularly bought your homes?
It depends. In the US Virgin Islands, it has been all Virgin Islands. Actually, the majority has been government employees.
Uh huh. Here in the United States.
It has been mixed. We get Latins, Americans, we just sold one to Americans, we sell it to Brazilians. So we're open, we're open.
My question is, I understand who you sell to, but what is, what has been the general, the overall population? That purchased your home, meaning the most, most Hispanic, most African Americans, most whites?
Well, in the state of Florida, at the labor force, we get a lot of African Americans and Latins, a lot. That's the majority of our group. As I will say, it's almost eighty percent of our, of our groups.
African American is eighty?
No, Latins and African Americans, like twenty percent, Latin is about eighty percent. And, and of the eighty percent, twenty percent is more like white Americans who retire and people from the north. But we are open to everybody.
Yeah, I, I understand the point. You're open to everybody, but I was just curious. So what particular group usually buys the homes?
It depends on the area. It's very, it's very difficult. Like I said, some areas we get, uh. A lot of African Americans, like I said, and some areas can be a lot of Latins. So it depends on, on the area. Florida has. A lot of areas, we heavily, some parts where we are in winter heaven are almost ninety percent Mexican descendant. So it's very strange.
It's safe to say it would probably be an accurate representation of whatever the makeup of people that live there is.
Exactly. That's accurate. Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
I, I just have one. This, this property that you're asking, will, will it have a fence? Are you fencing around the property, the whole entire property?
We're planning to put a fence on the, on the sides and in the front. Yes. Most of it for the privacy of the homes, but we're not putting a gate or nothing like that.
Okay. So it'll be open in the front where they can access the property, but in the front and down the sides will be fenced.
It will be fences.
And there'll be two openings to the property?
Yes, there's one on the north and one in the south.
The one in the north basically dies into the, uh, high school.
It is very convenient for people who have children who go to the high school.
And I, I see these little, um, structures here on the right hand side at the top. Um, you said that those were a clubhouse or a, um, what it, a clubhouse or?
Those are just the layout of each individual.
Oh, I see.
Those are the house. Yeah. We, we have no clubhouse. And this, in this particular one. We left green areas on it.
All right. Well, we look forward to you meeting with, uh, with Jeff again, um, hopefully putting something together and, um, hopefully we can move this forward to the next step.
Mayor, thank you very much. Commissioners, thank you for your time. Thank you for having me here. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All right. We don't, we have the pictures of those in here. Moving on to item number ten, we have the minutes from March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. This will be a regular city council meeting. We'll be looking for a motion.
Make a motion through the minutes from March thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, please.
Twenty twenty-three. All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire. Councilmember McCure. Councilmember Taylor. Deputy Mayor Bernard. Mayor Anderson. Motion passes.
Item number eleven, we have resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh three. This will be adopting the wastewater treatment plant facility plan.
Resolution of the City Council of City of Avon Park, Florida, relating to the Florida Department Environmental Protection State Revolving Fund Loan Program. Adopting the City of Avon Park Wastewater Treatment Plant Facility Plan dated September sixth, two thousand twenty-two, adopting the City of Avon Park. State Revolving Fund Capital Financing Plan, authorizing submission of the plans to the Florida Department Environmental Protection. Designating the City of Avon Park Authorized Resident Representative. Providing assurances and providing conflicts severability and effective date.
Okay, who wants to brief us on this?
I'll give you a, um, introduction. So you all seen this plan, um, in August over at the community center. Um, when Jameson presented the wastewater master plan, the water master plan and this plan. Um, we have been contacted by the D E P project manager who said that, um. During the presentation of the plan, we should have passed a resolution, um, saying that we adopted the plan. So that Jameson will have to represent the plan and then we'll adopt the resolution to stay in compliance with the loan.
Okay. So do we have to go through the whole presentation again?
It's very small. The wastewater facility plan is. And Jameson Christie has a clicker for you if you want to.
And if you will, just state your name and organization for the record.
Yes, I'm Jameson Tondro with Kimley Horn. Um, as Melody mentioned, we did a presentation for the, not only the, 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 the facility plan at the treatment plant, but also the master plans. But today I'm just recapping the facility expansion plan at the treatment plant. So just going to talk about our, our background and scope and purpose of the plan, uh, the population growth projections. Uh, the condition assessment and, and recommended improvements along with the different alternatives that we've looked at. For expanding the plant and for the septic receiving. Not right now.
That's about how I remember the presentation.
We might have to face it twice.
There we go.
All right. So we are contracted to identify issues at the plant, the deficiencies and the recommended, uh, improvement, improvements. Uh, generally for the expansion, uh, to go to one point five million gallons per day to two million gallons per day. Have a look at the flow projections, like I mentioned, the condition assessment and then the recommendations. Uh, for the flows, here were just our flow projections, uh, were part of the master plan and that's part of the expansion plan for the city. Uh, as you'll see, uh, it was looking like the plant was needed to expand. In within like, let's say fifteen to twenty years, in the next fifteen, twenty years. So the permitted capacity of the plant right now is one point five million gallons per day. So as you see at the twenty year mark, it's saying one point eight, six million gallons per day. And the, and the other main reason for this plan was because there's new D P. Requirements on the effluent to reduce your nutrient limits, nitrogen and phosphorus. So we looked at expanding the plant, but also making improvements to reduce the nitrogen and phosphorus in your effluent. So we also did a condition, condition assessment of the plant and kind of. Put together all of the improvements pretty much when we courted with agreed at the time and the operators, we came up with the list of these improvements. And the costs associated with those improvements. And then as part of the plan, we looked at different alternatives for the septic receiving. Which we ended up selecting alternative two, which included grit removal, grease removal and, and the septic. And then we looked at different alternatives for expanding the plant and also reducing the nitrogen phosphorus, as mentioned. And here were some of the costs associated with it, the capital costs, the operation maintenance. Um, so we looked at the net present worth. This is the cost over twenty years, what we were looking at and comparing. And we ended up getting together with the city and scoring each of the alternatives. And we ended up deciding alternative two, uh, which was adding the membranes. So it, it sets the city up. Uh, for years down the road because you don't have to add all these additional tankage. And it, it can permit not just to one point five or, I mean, two million gallons, sorry. You could permit it pretty much to, let's say, three million or four million gallons per day without adding a whole bunch of tankage in the future. And we are currently seeking, you know, grant money to cover all of these, um, improvements.
And the way that, uh. You were able to get so much more, um, million, so many more millions of gallons per day was because that was a totally different technology.
Correct. With the membrane, uh, with the membranes, you can increase, it's called the amount of solids you can have in the wastewater.
All right. Anything else on that? Jerry would just be looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh three. Okay. Looking for a motion to approve. We have a so moved. Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire. Councilmember McCure. Councilmember Taylor. Deputy Mayor Bernard. Mayor Anderson. Motion passes.
Item number twelve, this will be Kimley Horn Individual Project Order, I P O number five dash F D O T.
So this is for the, um, Kimley Horn's I P O number five and the amount of three hundred and seventy-four thousand twenty dollars. It is for the engineering portion of the, um, security fence out at the airport. It is covered by, um, F D O T at a hundred percent. This is phase one. D O T also has allocated approximately one point eight million, um. Total for this project, the three hundred and forty-seven for the design in twenty twenty-three. And one point five million for construction in twenty twenty-four. So the I P O has been reviewed and approved by both the city attorney and, um, Florida Department of Transportation.
Just one clerical question. You have the, uh, in the first two places, it says three hundred and seventy-four twenty and in the. Background information, it says three forty-seven twenty. Is that an error? Is that, am I looking at it wrong?
It's three seventy-four. My apologies. Three seventy-four. Zero two zero. And if you have any, um, questions, Brian Goodling from Kimley Horn is participating.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Brian? If there's no questions, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item number two twelve and the amount of three hundred and seventy-four thousand twenty. Okay, Kimmy Horn I P O number five.
All right. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire. Councilmember McCure. Councilmember Taylor. Deputy Mayor Bernard. Mayor Anderson. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number thirteen is to be Cool and Cobb Engineering Agreement, D E O Grant, I O one two two.
So this is the, um, engineering agreement for the D E O Fire Station Hardening Grant. That you guys have already chose Cool and Cobb. This is just the agreement that goes along with the bid process. And it is in the amount of sixty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-one. And, um, Carl Coles in the audience, if you have any questions.
All right. Do we have any questions for Carl? Seeing none. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Cool and Cobb Engineering Agreement, D E O Grant. Um, it's a I O one twenty-two, D thirteen.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire. Councilmember McCure. Councilmember Taylor. Deputy Mayor Bernard. Mayor Anderson. Motion passes.
Carl, you got off easy tonight. All right. We have item number fourteen, regular updates from city manager.
Just one thing, um, fam, as always, we had our Zoom meeting with. With, um, fam on it and our city team. We got everything's in fam's court now to get back to us. A A P P application, transition plan, a couple of the things. So they've been told they've got it. They got to get it done and get it back to us. They said they get it to us, um, sometimes beginning of this week.
Say beginning of next week.
This week.
This week. Okay. All right. Anything else on the city manager report?
So I can think of.
Okay. We don't have a, uh, scheduled next, uh, meeting about the D O T project on Main Street, do we?
No. Actually, I, I sent them an email to tell them I got a lot of. Good feedback from, uh, it and they said be, they'd be back in touch after they sat down, looked at everything that everybody, um, had brought up to them.
Very good. All right. Well, if there's nothing else. There's nothing else on the agenda. Anything to bring before the city? All right. Seeing none, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.